Good evening, welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for March 6, 2023. Can I have a motion to go into executive session to discuss matters specific to tenure and matters specific to the employment of particular individual in contractual negotiations?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Can I have a motion to go back into public session?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good evening, welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for March 6, 2023. May we please stand for the pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for armed forces and those in our community who have lost loved ones, especially the son of Kathy Giblin, the father of Lisa Epstein, and the grandfather of Nicole Toley.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic which stands: Our nation, God, visible, pretty, and just so.
We apologize for being a few minutes late. We are going to start with public comment. Before we start, it's agenda-related items. I just want to read our public comment rules. Although state law does not require us to hold a public comment period, we have chosen to do so because we believe it is crucial for us to hear from our community members about their concerns and issues. Please note that the board is here to listen. Public comment period is not designed to be a discussion. Accordingly, please do not expect the board to respond to your concerns and questions tonight. Speakers will ask to sign up in the appropriate signup sheet with their full name, address, and email. If your name is not legible or readable, you will not be called upon. Our policy 1230, public participation at board meetings, clearly states we do not allow discussion involving or using the name or situation of individual district personnel or students. Anyone who speaks in violation of our policy will immediately give up their right to continue to speak. Speakers are expected to conduct themselves in a civil manner. Anyone using abusive or inflammatory language, using offensive language, or in any way causing a disruption will give up their right to speak. Members of the audience are expected to maintain civility and respect for the views of others. We do not allow calling out, clapping, or disruption from the audience. We will be tracking each speaker's time, and towards the end of your three minutes, we will warn you to conclude. You fail to abide by the three-minute speaking time, we will turn off your microphone. Sorry, I have to read that at every meeting. You got the mic? Okay. We are going to call Mr. Killian.
Good evening. My name is Larry Killian, a resident of the school district since 1990, here because of the terrific schools. Please make a long-term plan to invest in solar panels and heat pumps to save a lot of money. Are there sources of revenue that could help fund the plan? Will ardently put up 2,100 solar panels to sell power to ConEd while still buying power from NISEC? And an outside vendor is paying IBM money to put up solar panels to make and sell electricity in their parking lot? So please get multiple estimates of possible revenue sources from our parking lots installing solar and charging stations. Next, please get multiple estimates for heat pumps and solar panels to cover all of the energy. That's all the energy needed for one of our smaller schools. Once installed, you stop paying for electricity and heating oil for the next 20 years. You can pay off the first loan in four years. The accrued savings will allow you to pay off the next loan in only three years, and so on. We need these estimates to have projects ready in hand to apply for Prop 1 money, which is approved by the voters in November. There's $400 million for solar panels and heat pumps. And now a word about electric school buses, which are safe, reliable, and cheap to run. The White Plains Schools, working with their bus contractor, National Express, are in their fifth year of running five full-size school buses, 60 miles a day, every day, even in the dead of winter. Not once has a bus run out of power, leaving the students stranded. They put the electric buses on the longest routes because they can easily go 60 miles on one overnight charge, and they are much cheaper than diesel buses to run, $5,000 a year cheaper per bus. So please work with the bus company to apply for EPA funds, as five Westchester districts have already. And as we know, the current contract with the bus company is running out. So now is the time to do the research, to find bus companies that are taking advantage of federal and state incentives to transition quickly to electric school buses to save money. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. My name is Mary Jane Killian. I'm a 33-year resident of Yorktown, a former -- a parent of a former student, retired teacher from another district, and a member of Yorktown 100. The last time I addressed the board, I was really speaking from personal experience. I had recently had a very pleasant ride on an electric school bus, and I was urging the board to transition to them because of the documented health benefits. When I was teaching, although I continually sought outside grants and funding for trips, I always wondered why I got such a headache riding on the buses. In the past year, I've gained much information from yet another perspective, the economic one. Because of the passage of Proposition 1 last November in New York State, there is substantial funding in the works for transitioning to electric buses, even if a district doesn't own their buses, like Yorktown. Additionally, there'll be four more years of rebates awarded through the EPA's Clean Bus Program, for which several Westchester County districts have already applied. So yay, there's money out there, lots of it. And there is also help for accessing these funds. There are organizations out there ready and willing to help school districts navigate this process, such as Mothers Out Front and the World Resources Institute. These groups have long advocated for the transition to electric buses, and their experts have developed guides and tools that can help school districts do the necessary planning along with their bus companies to apply for these funds. I've included the links to these organizations below, and I'll also email them to the board. But wait, we're also lucky in another way. We have another resource right here in Yorktown, a community group which is also ready, willing, and able to help with this transition, Yorktown 100. Many of us are retired, have expertise in these areas, and would love to help Yorktown be one of the model districts to make the transition to clean electric buses. We are proud to live in a town with such a successful and high-achieving school district. That's why we moved here. We are proud to live in this town, but we also would like to plan to be a leader in this other very important effort. I urge the board to commit to this transition and to let us help you with this important task. Thank you again for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Hi. My name's Bob DeAngelis. Some of you know me a little bit better than others. When I retired from IBM, I founded Yorktown 100, and I'm sincerely here to help. And I've actually mentored a number of teams in the schools over the years. Both my children went to these schools. One's a doctor now, one's an educator. I have a concern. We have a great school system, but we need a plan. We're still contributing. This school system itself contributes 3,500 tons of carbon dioxide or greenhouse gases to the environment every single year, year after year. 2,300 of those tons comes from heating. So we need a plan for heating, and it's not a simple thing to do. I've met with Dennis, and he understands your system very, very well. And we all know this is not a minor thing to do, but it can be done. My background is engineering. My background is planning. And as you can tell, I can calculate numbers for you. So what I would love to see is the school district put a plan together, a long-term plan, to address this. It's an investment each year to reduce our carbon emissions. Based on the best estimates to date, we have about 20 years to get to zero. After that point in time, we've done irreversible damage to our environment. Do we want to be the ones responsible for that? I don't think so. Are we going to wait for somebody to tell us to do it? That's really your call? I think it's better not to. I look at what's happening in earthquake zones. We still continue to build in the United States where there are major earthquake faults. You know why? Because you're allowed to do it. We still build -- more people are living in flood zones now than ever before. You know why? Because nobody stops them. And we're still contributing huge amounts of carbon dioxide to the atmosphere because nobody's stopping us at this point. If the state says, "You can't do it anymore," we all jump because we can't do it anymore. I really think we should be proactive, put a plan together to do the right thing, and invest year by year with an ultimate long-term goal of getting to zero in 20 years. I'm more than willing to provide some time and some engineering help to help you guys with that in any way I can. That's really all I'm asking for, is that plan with some investment. And as Eleanor Roosevelt said years ago, "The way to begin is to begin." I would like to see money invested in this plan in improving and reducing your greenhouse gas emissions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Alexandra Skoda. Two of my three children are students at Yorktown Schools. I'll speak about the buses tonight. The issue of diesel buses first affected me when my oldest daughter entered kindergarten at Mohansick back in 2017. I had a hard time standing next to her bus when it came to pick her up because of the smell of the bus. I did not think it was healthy for a five-year-old to inhale the fumes, so I started driving her to school myself, and I had to do it for two years. Having spent all that time driving her to and from school, I became interested in the topic, and I did some research about diesel buses. Sure enough, it wasn't just the smell that they were emitting. People wrote entire dissertations on the topic. Meanwhile, I met some parents whose children have asthma. One of my daughter's school friends has asthma. My neighbor's kid has asthma. A student of mine has asthma, and so on and so forth. We all know the cases. When I mentioned this to someone at Mohansick School, the reply was, "Well, it's the environment." In reality, it is the environment which we all create. You don't need to read a dissertation to figure out how much harm we bring by running these diesel or hybrid buses for hours in a row each day. I do know that school buses became even cleaner since 2017. At least, they're a little less smelly. I don't know how much less harmful are the school buses today, and I don't think people spend the time writing dissertations about them now, because today people are busy transitioning to electric buses. Last year, Croton purchased their first electric school bus. This year, it's White Plains and Terrytown School Districts. Many more will follow their suit very soon. As an owner of an all-electric car, I know both prongs and combs of electric vehicles. Yes, they are still more expensive to buy, and yes, they will probably be less expensive by 2035. They consume more electricity going up the hill or when operated in cold weather. However, beeline public transportation companies solve those problems. Terrytown and Sleepy Hollow have plenty of hills. They all took advantage of the governmental assistance and are now saving money on gas. They are also saving money on asthma and cancer treatments. Lastly, we all know about the deadline set by the state of New York. All school bus purchases must be electric by 2027, and all school buses are to be zero emissions by 2035. Do we really need to wait until then? I believe that by waiting, we continue to jeopardize our children's health. I believe that by waiting, we continue to ignore the global ecological crisis, and we show no respect for people who care. By waiting, we slow down the progress, which I believe has to be pushed forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm a member of Yorktown's Climate Smart Communities Task Force and have been ever since it was founded by our previous supervisor. I'm also a member of this group, Yorktown 100. So we have an interest in reducing carbon footprints, but a compelling interest is that I live in this school district, and I pay the school taxes. I have received my ConEd bill today, and even though I'm not using any more electricity, the cost is going up. I've also noted that the cost of solar panel installations is going down, and I think we've reached a crossover point. In fact, it pays to install solar panels. I've noticed that the JV Mall has done this, and IBM is doing it at their parking lot. I have an office at IBM, so it's hard not to notice. It would be nice if this school board can establish a committee or just rely on your facilities people, who are quite capable, and evaluate whether it makes sense to use your broad, flat roofs to install solar panels. That way, you can get free, fundamentally almost free, electricity, and you can use it to run the electric school buses too. So it's a win-win situation. Looking at television, reading the newspapers, recently, there's been a big breakthrough in nuclear fusion. They've just barely gotten more than break even. However, we can get the free results of nuclear fusion, which occurs in the sun. It puts out energy. It's about a kilowatt per square meter. And if we can catch that and turn it into electricity, we can save a lot of money and have a cleaner environment too. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So some of this will be addressed in our budget presentation, but can we just -- I know that you've had some discussions with ConEd. Can we just have an update as to where we are and what you've had discussions of and how and if we have been making any progress on any of this?
Yep. So this is not a new topic for us. This has been something that has been under discussion and under consideration for quite some time. In fact, we have been working with John Kane from ConEd Solutions. They came out last week, Dennis, was it last week or the week before? It was last week. They came out, they did an assessment of all of our campuses to determine feasibility for solar or feasibility for some other environmentally friendly alternatives to what we're currently doing. We're awaiting that report. We haven't seen that report, but we are down this road. It's something that our school district has taken in stride and see this as something that does need to move forward. So we're waiting to hear back from ConEd Solutions with regard to what their suggestions are. So that's on the solar side of this. Now, in terms of at least anything to add from the ConEd Solutions conversation, you were more directly part of that conversation.
So I do just want to add, once we see the report from ConEd Solutions, if they do identify a significant amount of projects that we can engage in, we will look to other vendors as well to get quotes, to get estimates. We may do an entire RFP or bidding process to see who can kind of get us the best deal on it. So, you know, if it's a significant project, if they're really identifying a lot of projects that we can do, I just wanted to add that we would seek competition.
Yeah. There were a few other options that we had looked at with the Mohansick Lower Field or what else can be done. So we're awaiting ConEd Solutions and their report. And then the other part of this are electric school buses. So that's something that we continue to be in communication with our transportation provider, Total Transportation, which has recently been bought out. So First Student is now the larger organization that has subsumed Total Transportation. They did start with electric bus. That bus has been out of commission since quite early in the school year. It has been defective. They'll -- they have committed to us that they'll continue to try to get us another electric bus, although it's not in their contract. However, as we do go out for RFPs, I think we have to recognize what the reality is, which is that this is the way things are trending and moving toward electric vehicles. And certainly in New York State, by 2027, the mandate is that school buses will be operating on electric. So as we craft a new RFP, and we will have to do that in the coming year, we're certainly mindful of those parameters within the RFP.
Total came out last year and talked to us about it. Is it possible at some point to get them back in here to give us an update as to where they stand in their process?
Absolutely. If that's something that the board would like, is to get Total Transportation back out, we can absolutely bring Total back out so that they can address the board and address the community on their progress.
And I think the last thing was heat pumps. Is that part of what ConEd is looking at in their whole energy?
I won't know till I see the report. So if they were given access to everything, if that's something that they recommend, we'll certainly look at it and consider it.
Do we have any idea when that report is due back?
We can -- we'll follow it tomorrow. They were here last week.
Okay. Will we then publicly present that report? What will we do with that?
We sure can, of course.
Maybe we can post it or whatever.
We can even have ConEd Solutions come out to the meeting, present to the board.
That might be a really good idea.
Okay. Just, I think that's a good idea to have ConEd Solutions come. I mean, we clearly have very knowledgeable community members who can provide their input, so I think that that would probably be a good idea.
And just to add, so our transportation contractor, I think, I'm curious to understand from them what they highlighted and what, you know, some specific details, because I haven't seen anything from them. They haven't shared, you know, with us, like here in the district. Because I've seen other districts, I've seen the electric buses right here on 202, so I'm just curious how or what they are using, you know, what we can do.
That's a great point. So we'll invite Total Transportation out, just like they were here last spring. We'll invite them back out to address the board and address the community on this. Makes sense.
Thank you. We have a public hearing. So can I have a motion to open the public hearing on the transfer of a portion of funds in the district's Retirement Contribution Reserve Fund to the voter-approved Capital Reserve Fund?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Lisa, do you want to explain what this is?
So what the district would like to do is the ERS Reserve, which is money that the district sets aside to pay for certified, I'm sorry, classified employees' pensions. That amount has been determined to be overfunded, that reserve amount. So the district would like to move $4 million out of that reserve fund and put it into our capital reserve fund for future capital projects that have yet to be identified. But we need to hold the public hearing to accept comments regarding moving the money out of the ERS Reserve Fund.
And the ERS was identified by the auditor?
Yes. So our auditors, when they were here last June, had commented to us that it appeared to them that that fund was overfunded and that we should consider other options for those funds. And this is one of the allowable options, is to transfer it to the Capital Reserve Fund.
So can we just explain the Capital Reserve Fund again, please?
So, yes.
Go ahead.
Before we do that, just --
Yes.
The auditors arrived at the determination about the ERS fund because it's based on a percentage of your total exposure. So there's a certain percentage that we're comfortable, based on our overall exposure. They believe that that amount should be even a lower percentage, and that's what necessitated the transfer. So we're covering the exposure of our ERS. ERS are non-certificated staff members, so not classroom teachers, not administrators, not anyone in what's called the teacher-retirement system. It's all of the other employees within our school district who are part of the employee-retirement system. And so the R auditors determined that the percentage of our total exposure was too high, and therefore, they suggested we reduce that amount. And moving to the Capital Reserve Fund, which is the most prudent location for those monies, assists us to do some upkeep and maintenance projects within the school district without the costs of borrowing monies, the interest costs, the legal fees, the bonding costs for the election, the notices of bonds. Now, there are certain times where bonds are more appropriate than Capital Reserve. Certain larger-scale projects make bonding more feasible. However, for smaller-scale projects, redoing some flooring, changing some of the doors, even HVAC systems, you can use Capital Reserve. The gymnasium at the high school, the servery at Brookside, the nurses' suite at Mohansick, those are all upgrades that we were able to make using the Capital Reserve Fund. And that's something that the board and the steering committee of the board have been integral in identifying projects with our architects and our construction manager, just to really enhance the facilities and ultimately enhance the student experience within the facilities. So we have done some great things with the Capital Reserve Fund. The projects for these monies have not yet been identified. We'll continue to work with the steering committee. I believe we have a meeting tomorrow at 2:30 to continue to identify projects that these monies can be used for. And the -- I just want to share one piece. We have a lovely Jumbotron scoreboard on the turf field at the high school. I do want to share that that was not paid for with Capital Reserve monies. That was actually a grant that was secured with the New York State Dormitory Authority. So those were not school district funds that were used for the Jumbotron outside. However, as part of the Capital Reserve, all of the renovations in the gymnasium came from the Capital Reserve Fund, including the scoreboard inside. So I just wanted to clarify that one piece.
And the other piece is that even though we're moving money into the Capital Reserve Fund, in order to take it out of there, we have to have voter approval on what would happen at a May meeting, because they have to approve the projects we're going to use. It's not just money we can use anywhere.
Yes. Last spring, voters authorized the renewal of the school district's Capital Reserve Fund, and we're thankful to the community for reauthorizing the Capital Reserve Fund. And it was for another 10 years and $12 million max. So this all falls within the parameters of what the voters and taxpayers approved last May. And now we'll deposit the money into the account. To withdraw the money into the account, we actually need taxpayer approval and authorization through a vote again. So more information will come forward once those projects are identified, because ultimately the community will have to take action to withdraw those monies.
Does anybody have any questions? Okay. So is this open for public comment only on this motion to move the money? Does anybody in the public have any comment? Okay. Can I have a motion to close the public hearing? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay. We're going to move on to the superintendent's update.
Okay. So this evening, before we get to the budget presentation, there are just a couple of reminders that I want to share. Kindergarten enrollment is open. We're seeing that maybe there's a delay in registering for kindergarten. Please don't wait. If you have a child or you know somebody who's going to be eligible for kindergarten this September, they'll turn five by December 1st, please have them come out and register. They can contact Catty Sauber's office and schedule the time to submit the registration paperwork and complete the registration paperwork. So please don't wait. That's one of the unknown parts as we go through the budget development process is kindergarten enrollment, and that's a critical piece of information for us to have. So please don't wait, don't delay. Come out, register for kindergarten. We can't wait to have your children here in the Yorktown Schools. Additionally, we have some upcoming events that I'd like to just share with our school community. This weekend, we have Into the Woods. There are three performances. If you have not yet purchased your tickets, please do. Our students are just so extraordinarily talented. Friday night at 7:00, Saturday night at 7:00, Sunday afternoon at 2:00. Tickets are available on the website, they're available on the various Twitter pages from the high school. But I would encourage you to purchase tickets if you have not yet done so. It's a great show. You don't have to be a student at Yorktown High School. In fact, my children are not students at Yorktown High School. Both are looking forward to the show. It's just going to be a great display of theatrical talent. Additionally, the following weekend, we have the Wizards coming to town. I believe that's the 18th.
Yeah.
So 18th, we have a 2 o'clock and a 6 o'clock performance. I'll be coaching the team. I have my roster, so I've been channeling my inner coach, basketball coach, so that I can put forth a really formidable challenge to the Wizards. So we're looking forward to that event. Again, another great event sponsored by our district PTSA. Please come out, consider supporting. There are very few tickets left. As of Friday, when we sent out the last blast, the tickets were really dwindling. I'm not even sure if it -- I'm not even sure if at any point they've run out. However, please go onto the website. We sent the link in the last communication from Friday afternoon. The district PTSD is a great organization that supports so much of the fine work happening in our school district and bringing this programming to our school district. Not only is it a great opportunity for our students, but it's also a great fundraiser for our school district as well. And then what I'll also share is we have so many other wonderful things happening in our schools. Our musicians are doing great work. Our spring season is going to get started next week. We begin the tryout process and so on and so forth. And the one plug that I'll put out for any families in our school community, if you're looking for something to do on a spring afternoon, the weather is going to get a little nicer. This weekend, we push our clocks ahead, so it'll get darker a little later in the evening. Come on out to some of the games. You can catch a softball game, a lacrosse game, a baseball game, all on the same campus, and it's just a great community opportunity, a great opportunity to come together as a community. So please come on out, anything and everything. You don't have to have children in the high school to come to a high school softball game. And you don't have to have children in the high school to come to a high school lacrosse game. Come on out, enjoy the games. There's no charge to attend any of the games, just a great experience for the family. And now I'm just going to transition, and there are so many other updates. Congratulations to our first Lego League team on all of their success. Our Science Olympiad team at the middle school is having an extraordinary season. So just some great things happening across the board. And certainly, social media, we're posting as many of the accolades as we can, and we certainly are inviting students to our Board of Education meetings, certainly the upcoming meetings. But at this time, I'm going to transition to the next series in our budget presentations. I gave the initial overview, and then we'll move into the individual components of the budget presentation. So at this time, I'm going to turn the superintendent's report over to Ms. Amphilippou to give the presentation on general support, employee benefits, facilities, transportation. So Ms. Amphilippou, I'll turn it over to you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Tonight, we will provide the third public information session in our six-part budget series. In the following slides, we will discuss the general support, employee benefits, facilities, and transportation sections of the budget. Board of Education section includes the Office of the District Clerk, as well as the mandated cost of the annual budget vote and elections. We continue to use the BOLD system. That's an automated election management system. The cost of this software is captured through our BOSI's, which generates state aid in the subsequent year on the expenditure. The next section is for Central Administration and Finance. These sections encompass the Office of the Superintendent and the entire financial operation of the school district. Central Administration and Finance Departments include seven full-time employees, but in the Finance section, money is budgeted for the settlement of non-represented employees across the entire school district. The Contractual Expense section includes the fully-integrated financial accounting system, called Envision, Medicaid billing services, educational data cooperative bidding services, independent asset management services, and administration of the district's deferred compensation, or 403B plan. The Finance section is continued here, where we have the cost of auditing, both internal and external audits every year, and the cost of our claims auditor, all of which are state mandates. The cost of the Treasurer's Office and legal counsel services are also represented here. Next is Human Resources and Special Items. Human Resources has full three-time employees. All of the costs associated with recruiting, benefits management, contract administration, and employee relations are captured here. The Special Items section of the budget is where we have the insurance costs, which includes general liability coverage, crime coverage, and in-ground fuel storage tanks, tank insurance premiums. The cost of leased Xerox machines throughout the district have been moved to another area of the budget, as per Gatsby 87, the accounting for leases. So you won't see it here, you'll see it in a different part of the budget. We have also centralized district-wide postage into one code, pulling from other areas of the budget. So when you see an increase in the postage line, it's being pulled from other areas, just to clarify. The last two lines on this page are related to the BOSI's budget. We are part of the BOSI's consortium, made up of 18 school districts in our region. These costs, BOSI's administrative costs and the BOSI's capital costs, are apportioned to each school district based on a formula that includes assessed values and student enrollment for each district. Our next section will discuss facilities and operations. Here's an overview of the district facilities. French Hill is still idle, but is being leased out to seven individual tenants. The school district's wrestling program is located in the building, and we retain a series of rooms for storage purposes. We currently generate revenue from tenants sufficient to cover routine maintenance for the buildings and grounds on that campus and provide a modest, excuse me, provides a modest cash flow that reduces the tax rate. So I won't go into every item that's indicated on this slide, but I'll just hit some of the highlights. The operations of the physical plant section includes costs related to all staff salaries, heating and cooling energy costs, and all of the materials and supplies necessary to support operations. The overtime budget has been increased to reflect actual historical usage. The cost of snow removal operations, providing access to outside community groups, and the oversight of the French Hill School building, idle since 2010, are also captured here. We have taken over the nightly cleaning of French Hill. We've brought that in-house, saving the district approximately $36,000 per year. As electricity costs have significantly fluctuated over the current year, we have increased the electricity budget in anticipation of sustained higher prices. The heating-fuel contingency is being maintained based on the volatility of the oil market. With the new dual-fuel boilers at Brookside, we are using more natural gas at that building and have increased that line accordingly. Finally, we have increased the budget for materials and supplies, as the cost of paper goods and other supplies have increased significantly over the year. The maintenance codes reflect a large amount of the work that we are now able to do with in-house labor in the form of carpentry, HVAC, systems, plumbing, electrical work, and site projects. We also utilize outside contractors obtained through bids and requests for proposals to perform more complex work on heating and cooling systems. Maintenance projects being planned throughout the district for next year include the re tubing of two remaining boilers at the high school, replacement of leak-detection devices on our underground storage tanks, water heater replacements, flooring window and door replacements, among other things. Finally, we are implementing an online facilities management system as well. In total, the entire general support section of the budget increased by about $664,000, or 6.9% over last year's budget. We will now review the Employee Benefits section of the budget. These costs are not allocated to the individual areas of the budget. They are all consolidated into this one area. They include teachers' retirement and employee retirement pensions, Social Security or FICA tax, health insurance, life insurance, workers' comp, and unemployment insurance. For 2023-24, the total benefit cost will rise by approximately $774,000, or approximately The primary cost drivers include health insurance premiums, which are increasing by just under $600,000, and the increase in FICA of $250,000, in part due to the increase in the maximum wage base on FICA salaries from $147,000 to $160,200. And while there is an increase in the ERS rate, the TRS rate is decreasing from 10.29% to 9.76%, which helps to offset some of the other increases. The district has established a reserve fund to help mitigate the rising cost of the pension system. We plan, again, to utilize $1 million, $500,000 from ERS Reserve and $500,000 from the TRS Reserve to offset the cost of these two items. The next is a look at student transportation. So at a glance, the Yorktown Central School District uses a four-tier bus system. That means that generally, each bus has four distinct AM and PM runs daily. In the morning, the high school students are transported first, then the middle school students, then crumpet students, and finally, the two K-3 schools, Brookside and Mohansick. In the afternoon, for dismissal, the same cycle repeats itself. The four-tier cycle takes just over three hours in the AM and in the PM to complete. We will continue to utilize 70 vehicles of varying sizes to provide this service again in 2023-24. The district provides home-to-school transportation to private and parochial schools of Yorktown Central School District residents within the distance requirements established by the State Education Department. We also provide transportation services to students attending special education programs outside of our school district boundaries. Our buses travel more than a half a million miles each year, consuming more than 57,000 gallons of fuel. Next page shows the transportation budget for next year. We expect total transportation costs to increase by over $511,000. But we have reallocated athletic and field trips of $324,000 to this budget area, which is skewing the year-to-year comparison, but that's a new line in this section of the budget. Our rate of contracted increase for 2023-24 is based on either the rate of inflation or 4%, whichever is lower. That's contractually with our transportation provider. We are therefore estimating the 4.0% increase to CPI as the escalation factor for 2023-24. The cost of diesel fuel will also increase based on the significant rise in gas prices in general. In total, we expect our transportation costs to increase by approximately 6.8% when you exclude the transfer of field trips and athletic trips, to be consistent from year to year. So our next budget presentation will be on March 13th, when we will cover the athletics and co-curricular budgets. The Board of Education will adopt its budget on April 10th, and the vote will be held on May 16th. So if you have any questions, we're happy to answer.
Thank you. You want to sit? Lisa?
No, I don't have any questions. Thank you, Lisa.
Sure.
Lisa, you had mentioned, we idled French Hill, and we have, I believe, seven tenants you mentioned in there. With our, you know, anticipated expanding enrollment, what are our plans at this point with French Hill?
So right now, we've been working with the steering committee and our new architects to determine the appropriate use of French Hill and to address our emerging enrollment issues. So French Hill may or may not be a part of the solution to that problem with enrollment, but we are meeting with our architects and the committee on a regular basis to try to determine what our next steps are going forward, which would also encompass options for French Hill.
Thank you. Freshman?
I have two questions. My first question is, it's one of the last slides, 15, about the athletic and other field trips. So I think this year, it's going from zero into projected almost $325,000 for next year. So what's in that bucket?
So that bucket, again, it's coming from other areas of the budget. So for the most part, the bulk of it is athletic trips, right? But there are other field trips in there as well. But those in prior years were budgeted in the instructional codes, and they really need to be budgeted in the transportation code. So that's why we pulled them out and put that, we rolled it into one budget line and put it there. But the majority of it are for athletic trips, transportation to games and competitions, and some other co-curricular things, but mainly, a lot of it is athletics.
So would you see a corresponding decrease?
Yes. Right. When you look at, when you see the athletic budget next time, it'll be significantly lower.
Gotcha. So it's just getting reallocated from elsewhere? It's not a real increase?
Right.
Okay, great. My other question is about the bus cameras. I'm trying to find, I don't think that's on the same slide. No, actually, it is. So there's about $37,000, $38,000 allocated for bus cams. Are we changing all the cameras on all the buses? Like, what's involved in that?
Not all the cameras. There's some additional hardware that it's been determined is old and dated, that Patty would like to upgrade, and it would improve the communication between the buses directly with her. So it's just upgrading some of the recorders on the cameras.
So when we put out the transportation RFP, like, would the cameras transport if we end up changing providers?
Yes, so I think the idea would be to put into the RFP when we go out and transfer the responsibility of the maintenance of the cameras to the transportation provider. So we're going to try to work with our current transportation provider to see how we can maybe negotiate this piece of it now. We just need money there, just in case we need to do something with it to get them to take ownership of it.
Great, thank you.
Mike?
Along that same theme, I have two questions also. One is, I noticed that we have cameras on 38 of the 49 routes. Why do we not have them on all? Are they not working, or is it not?
I think that, I can check with Patty for sure, definitely, but I think as buses were added throughout the years, cameras weren't installed on those particular buses. So we would just have to backfill and kind of, and get them all.
The cameras that we're using are still the ones that we had, that we transferred from the other provider.
They're about five or six years old. I think it was my first year that we decided to go with the bus cameras. So as buses have been phased out, some of the cameras have broken, they've been damaged along the way. Part of this will, part of the monies that we're allocating will get us new cameras, but the bigger piece here with the cameras is the technology from five and six years ago is not as cloud-friendly as the technology today. So some of the issues that we're running into are accessibility of the camera footage in a timely manner. Right now, what we're doing, and it's a bit antiquated, is in some cases, we're using the actual memory card. This should all be cloud-based. We should be able to pull all of this through the cloud on demand with full control. So we're looking at that. But I do agree with what Lisa said, and our pathway forward is to transfer this responsibility to the provider. Because the buses, the cameras go down, and the cameras need to be replaced. You do have children on the bus. They are within, I mean, the buses are not that high in terms of ceilings. They are within arm's reach. So the cameras do get damaged. It's just part of operating a school bus for 180 days of school year. So transferring the responsibility for the upkeep to the bus company. Right now, it's not in their contract to have cameras on the buses. This is something that we negotiated with them to include. However, moving forward, it's something that we must do, is to transfer this and get this included in the RFP, because it's not in their contract right now.
So staying on the theme of the buses for a minute, I mean, I'm interested in understanding how the company and the school district plans on meeting the zero-vehicle emissions mandates, but maybe that's a better question left for the bus company when they come?
We'll certainly pose it, because ultimately, we'll be writing up specs for an RFP that reflect the state requirements, the timeline of the state requirements, and it's going to be incumbent on them to meet those requirements. So certainly, when we invite them in to speak with us about the electric vehicles, that's a great question that we can present to them.
Our current contract ends in July?
Believe it's, it's certainly at the end of the school year. I'm just not sure if it's June or if it's July, but it certainly ends at the end of the school year.
So...
Oh, no, it's the next year. One more, I'm sorry, we have one more.
We have one more whole year.
We have one more next year. We'll be working on the specs for the RFP during the coming school year. We do have one more year.
When you invite Total in to speak to us, can you please let them know some of our concerns, so they come fully prepared and not say, oh, well, I have to get back to you?
Of course. And they've heard the concerns already, and they've had the conversation, so they'll have ample notice, but we'll certainly provide them a reminder.
I appreciate that. Pete?
Couple things. With regards to the maintenance of the plant, it seems a fairly significant increase budget over budget. The first question I had was, how are we tracking against the budget for '22 and '23? Is it tracking on, or below, or above?
I think so far this year, we're tracking on. We're definitely not over. So the reason we're, typically, we do a big summer project...
So the reason we're, typically, we do a big summer project with architects, and it's designed, and it goes up to the state, and that's something that really needs to be started almost in the fall for the following year. The fact that we transitioned to new architects this year messed up our scheduling of that a little bit, but we still had some significant maintenance projects that we wanted to deal with this summer. So increasing the maintenance costs in next year's budget will allow us to deal with some of those projects.
And the things like the heating systems and plumbing, that is all, is it equipment? Is it labor? Is it?
It's mostly, it's maintenance on the equipment. So for example, what's included in there is, you know, the re tubing of boilers at the high school. So not new boilers, but the tubing is, it's getting old, so we're going to replace it. So it's upkeep of our existing systems.
And then the last, when looking through this from an increase in a lot of these lines, it was 3%, there were 6%. There was, so I'm assuming in some of the later presentations, we're going to see minuses?
I mean, the math has to level out so that we're tax cap compliant. So as we saw an increase in the transportation line of the budget, we'll see an offsetting decrease in the athletics transportation line of the budget. So at the end of the day, I think what our work is going to be throughout this budget process is to acknowledge the needs, present the needs, and present some of the thinking behind those needs. But at the end of the day, we're going to deliver a budget to the board for consideration. That's certainly below the tax cap levy amount.
And that balances.
Of course.
You get me nervous.
Lisa, can you explain what the facilities management software is?
Yes. So it's something called Brightly. It's a facilities use and management software. We had something similar in prior years called SchoolDude. SchoolDude has sort of phased out. Brightly has taken over, so we're going to transition to Brightly. It allows for outside users who want to request facilities use to go online, to see what's available, to do the whole process, the approval process electronically. That's one piece of it. The other piece of it is a maintenance, like a work order program, where that's not something we're doing right away, but that might be down the line, something we're looking to do, where all the work orders for, and maintenance requests will be logged and approved through the system as well. So we have a tracking and a trail of what work is being done in our buildings.
Oh, that's fantastic. Okay. The other question, if we can stay in facilities usage, what is the main driver of the energy increases? Is our energy usage going up, or the per kilowatt hour going up? You know, do we have any matrix to know where we stand along this?
And Dennis can certainly chime in if I'm speaking incorrectly, but I believe that our usage is pretty consistent. It is the price per kilowatt hour or per gallon of fuel that is fluctuating. Dennis agrees.
I have a couple other questions, but I don't know if anybody else has questions? Okay. The public relations line that's new. Ron, do you want to speak to how that has been working out for you?
Sure. So that has.
Sorry, Brian.
One of our goals and one of the areas of focus for the Board of Education was to make sure that our community had information and was presented with timely information, and the certainly role of the public relations specialist and coordinator has been absolutely terrific. Our social media pages are revitalized. There's a lot of fresh content. The websites have been revamped, making for a more user-friendly experience in terms of navigating policies or navigating to the site to more intuitive experience for anyone who's accessing our website and the various menus within our website. Lunch menus are probably the most sought after, behind the e-school database. Besides that, lunch menus are the most sought after link on our website, and those, we went from five clicks to two clicks to get to the school lunch menu. You now click on lunch menu, and you click on your school, and you're there. So it's a better user experience, and that's attributed, honestly, to Brian's work. Brian has done a tremendous job in so many regards, from the stories that we've published to the newspaper coverage we've received, to just making sure our community has information, and the information is easily accessible to the platform that our community is accessing, using to access information, whether it's Twitter, Facebook, the website. We have so many different means of communication throughout our district, and I just really attribute so much of our success to Brian's excellent work. And even the newsletter, the Smore platform is something new for us. We haven't delved into Smore, and when Brian presented Smore to me, I asked, if that was a food. And Brian said, no, no, it's this great digital platform that we have and that we can access, and it's been terrific. We've received really great feedback on the information and, on the information we're presenting, and at the end of the day, our community is getting the information they deserve, which is really important for us, and that's something that the Board certainly prioritized coming into this year and beyond, certainly. And that's worked out very well. So I thank the Board for your support in that position.
I have seen a huge difference. Health insurance. Who sets that rate?
The Finance Committee of the Putnam Northern Westchester, BOSI's Health Insurance Consortium sets that rate. We have a seat on that. Ultimately, it was going to be even higher. We were able to negotiate that amount down on the increase. The consortium was looking at somewhere in the area of a seven-plus percent increase. Where we landed was at 5.5% after a few rounds of discussion and negotiation and consideration. There'll also be some concessions on the insured side, where we'd be looking at other plan modifications. So more to come on the plan modification piece, but the five and a half percent, I trust, will stick. You'll recall, last year, we started at six and then went to eight after the COVID test mandate was put out. I don't anticipate that there'll be a change from the five and a half percent. We're pretty strong in our position on that being the cap.
Okay. And then just one last thing, and then I'm done. I know we have all the additional energy costs within the budget, anticipating what's going on, but none of that is going to preclude us from looking at these alternative sources and looking at other ways to go carbon neutral and stuff like that. We're going to continue investigating that, even though we have already budgeted for other stuff, correct?
Yes, absolutely. Because whatever, whatever projects we may undertake, it's going to be a process. It's, we need state approval, we need to bid, we need, there's a lot involved in it. It's unlikely that it'll impact during the '23, '24 budget cycle. It's probably going to be in the following budget cycle.
But we are committed to investigating this process.
Absolutely.
Okay. I just want to be clear. Okay. Everybody else is good with budget? Thank you. We're up to our board discussion item. So we have a board vacancy. Mr. DeLisandro resigned last meeting, and we must fill that position. We have a few options that we can do it. We have, it has to be done within 90 days, so we have to discuss how we want to do it. We can either appoint somebody, or because we are in the 90-day period before the election, we have talked to our attorneys, and we can wait till the upcoming election and let the community decide. So it's up for discussion. I don't know if any board member has any thoughts or, you know, opinions on this matter? Lisa?
What's the process for appointment?
In the past, we have gone out and asked the community to send in letters of, you know, interest. We have interviewed those people, and we have made a decision that usually takes us, I don't know, about a month to six weeks, I think. How long have it taken us, Mike?
Really, we solicited the resumes and then actually brought them in here and had almost like a mock board interview. And from there is what we typically would pick. But it typically took.
About three, four weeks.
Thirty days, three weeks to five weeks, depending on how long we keep resumes out there. And when you, I guess, when you look at the election, is what, May 16? So we're roughly 60 days away. 65 days.
Do you have an opinion?
Well, working backwards, I think basically if we go to the appointment route, we're looking at probably someone to fill the role for 30 days, and they would have to go through the election process again. My bias is that we allow the people to decide who that next role. I mean, we've, there's six of us here. We can still vote and conduct our weekly business until that time, and then the people speak on who they want to fill the seat with. That's just, not that I don't want to appoint, because I've been part of an appointment process, but I just think for the amount of time, I think we're probably doing that person at this service. Because again, the idea that they have to run again right then and there, so.
So a person who is appointed by the Board would be up for election in the May election?
Correct.
And does that person, if they lose the election, does that person keep their seat until June 30th?
Yes.
So the appointment?
No, no, they don't, no, I'm sorry. They don't keep their seat. The person who is elected takes that seat immediately.
Effective as of the election, essentially?
Correct.
That night.
Yes.
Because it was a vacancy, correct?
Correct.
So, right, so what Yvette just said was Anthony's seat was up for election this year anyway.
So just to make sure I understand the question and the answer. So it does take about, I think, three weeks. I mean, just in my time here, we fill two vacancies. We generally give about two weeks for the resumes to come in, the letters of interest, and then at the next board meeting, we invite them and ask them some questions and make a decision. So give or take, depending on the timing of the board meeting, it's, you know, overall three to four weeks. So if that person is going to be, so that puts us early April, about five weeks from that, from the election. So that person is going to be here for only five weeks. I mean, that's, it's certainly a possibility that that person will be here for longer than that. But if they're only here for five weeks, then I think it's more, more of a transition for us also, because we got to get them up to speed, and there's a learning curve. I had a learning curve as well. So I think it's, it's all right to wait till the election in May and have somebody appointed, not appointed, but have to have the elected person onboard in May.
And just so we're clear that if, first of all, petitions are available right now to anybody who wants to run for, there's two seats up. Petitions are available. You can contact the district clerk. But whoever wins that seat would take that seat immediately that night. They would be sworn in that night. So we wouldn't be out of a seat till June 30th. We would only be out of the seat till May 17.
Correct. Would it be, so out of the two candidates, the two top vote-getters that night, so I guess they would, how would that work?
The top vote-getter would take that seat immediately?
I would like to think Mike is going to run, and we would love to have Mike run. So in that case, so let's assume that Mike was the top vote-getter. So then it would be the second one, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah. I kind of agree with what everyone's suggesting, in that I don't know that going through the effort to try to find somebody, bring them in, get them up to speed, and then have them run again and possibly not get elected, which would look awful. It doesn't make any sense to me. I think we should just put our efforts, let them put their efforts into running, if that's what they want to do, and let the community decide. I mean, ultimately, they'll decide anyway, but I just think it's a little bit, saves a lot of energy.
We had a lot of years where we didn't have a lot of interest in people running for the Board. In the last couple of years, we have had interest, and there have been community members who have stepped forward. Seeing that we have that, I think that we should allow these people to step forward if they so want to run, and let the community make the decision as to who they would like sit in that seat.
To me, those are the key words, right? We are, we're elected to be here by the community, and especially for such a short period of time, if you're talking about at best five weeks, which is perhaps two meetings, at worst, one or no meetings. I think letting the community decide who should sit in that seventh chair is the best way to go.
Okay. So are we all in agreement that that's what we will do? Okay. Yvette, is there anything that you need to notice, or can we put a notice on, Brian, can we put a notice on the webpage with a link to how to connect to Yvette, please? All right?
When are petitions due by?
April 17th, 5:00 PM. And 47 signatures?
So I just had a question.
Oh, it's 2% of the total vote from the prior year. Got it.
Which question was?
My question was, do we need to look at or reconfigure any of our committees based on the vacancy? Or are we good till?
I think we're good. I would just wait till May. Or, yeah, May or June.
Okay. Sounds good.
Just in my head, that's a similar, like, you're going to ask somebody to step into the middle of a committee temporarily, potentially?
Yeah, I mean, we can.
Anthony was not the head of any committee.
No.
So we have our, we have our chairs in place, and there's at least two people on every committee. He would have been the third on two of them.
Yeah.
So I think we're covered.
Good. And why don't we just go over what the committees are?
That Anthony was on?
No, in general. What?
Well, we have policy, which you, Cheryl, and I sit on. We have audit, which you, Reshmi, and Pete sit on. We have fiscal, which is Mike and I at this point. We have steering, which is Cheryl and I at this point. Are we missing any of it? And then where we, isn't there health and safety that you're the representative to? Right.
Just the representative. So Anthony was on two committees as a third person, the fiscal and.
But no, I just wanted to go over the four committees, so people understood.
Steering. And I'm actually an alternate on steering, or I was.
Yeah, you are.
I could fill in if need be, but I haven't, I haven't had to.
Okay. We good? All right. We're going to go up to board action items. Can I have a motion to approve the budget vote and election notice for 2023 to '24 is listed below?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Can I have a motion to approve the appointment of John Gridley, a Yorktown community member to the YCSD Audit Committee membership for the 2022, '23 school year in accordance with YCSD Audit Committee Charter and adherence to policy 6690?
So moved.
Second discussion?
Yep.
You want to just speak a little bit about how we got to this point?
Absolutely.
Thanks.
So the Audit Committee has a community member that serves on the committee. So earlier in the school year, we had a vacancy. We had Tom Donatelli that used to serve in that capacity, and he stepped down from the committee due to a move. So that's been vacant. We put out ads on our, on our website via Twitter. Thank you, Brian, for all your help in pushing out the tweets. So we looked at the resume that was received, and we looked, and so we interviewed John, Peter, Lisa, myself. We spoke with him, and we felt he'd be a good candidate for this position. He has an extensive background in audit. He worked for one of the big three audit firms earlier in his career, now works for a hedge fund. And I think he brings the business background, the audit background that we need on this committee. So we look forward to working with John, and I think he'll be a good addition.
Reshmi, it's very difficult to find people willing to serve on this committee, correct? I mean, I know you've been looking for months and months, so it's not because you kept turning down people, it's because nobody stepped up to do this, correct?
That's right. And I think, I mean, just, you know, I think that's generally true for a lot of the volunteering. You know, it's, in our, you know, even in our community, there's, you know, like, even, even last year, there were only six people that ran for the Board of Ed, right? So, and same in the PTAs, and I think this is a similar role. It's just hard to find people from the community that want to give up their time and give up their evenings and want to volunteer. So, yeah.
So we're very appreciative they stepped up.
And this, I think you're going to see, he's a, he was a good candidate, and I think he is a very genuine man, and he's at a point in his life where he wants to volunteer, and with his background. and, and he's had a point in his life where he wants to volunteer and with his background, I think we'll welcome him. He'll do a good job.
Fantastic. Okay.
And his kids went through the Yorktown schools as well. One is still here, but he did, you know, we, we all kind of talked about the quality of the education that our, all our children perceive. So, yeah, I think he'll be a good addition.
Terrific. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. All right. Policies. We have a motion to approve the first reading and adoption of the following policy and regulation, sixty-seven hundred purchasing and sixty-seven hundred R purchasing regulation.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, I just, Lisa, we just had a very minor change based upon the COVID funds audit. Is that correct?
Yes, so New York State reviewed our COVID grants that we received from the federal government. And one of the recommendations was that we indicate in our purchasing policy that federal funds should be used to purchase preferably made in the USA supplies and equipment where practicable. So we're just adding that to our policy under our federal fund section to indicate where all other, where everything else is the same will favor the product manufacturing in the United States.
And what, is that the only comment on the COVID funds audit?
So far, they're not completed yet, but that was one that we told them we would try to take care of quickly.
Terrific. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Now, the board will conduct the first reading of the following policies. We have four-three-three, four-point-one high school credit for college courses, five-zero-two-five student sexual harassment and grievance procedures, five-four-two-five automatic external defibrillators and five-four-seven-oh, missing children. Anybody have any comments or concerns? No? Okay. Then move on to personnel. On recommendation of the superintendent, a motion that the following be approved. We have certified personnel extra duty, teaching stipends, unpaid leave of absence and under classified personnel, we have a resignation.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. Business office. Whereas Section six R of the General Municipal Law permits a transfer of a portion of money in a retirement contribution reserve fund to a capital reserve fund established in accordance with Section thirty-six fifty-one of the education law, provided that a public hearing is held prior to the making of such transfer of funds. Be resolved that the Board of Education, after giving the public an opportunity to be heard at a public hearing on the proposed transfer of funds from the district's Retirement Contribution Reserve Fund to the voter-approved Capital Reserve Fund, hereby appropriates the sum of four billion dollars from the Retirement Contribution Reserve Fund and authorizes the transfer of such fund to the district's Capital Reserve Fund known as a Buildings and Facilities Improvement Reserve Fund.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. A motion to approve the two thousand twenty-three Capital Projects Pre-Referendum Services Proposal and the On Call Architectural Services Proposal from Mamassi pursuant to the terms and conditions of the master agreement dated January twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. We're up to board comments. Lisa?
I just want to thank Yorktown One Hundred for coming out and keeping us on task on this issue. It's easy for us to get distracted with all the other things going on in the district. So thank you for, for coming out.
Cheryl?
I'm good, thank you.
Reshmi?
Yeah, I would like to thank our speakers during our public comment today. I think the discussion was timely in the context of where we are with our budget process. And as Dr. Hatter said, I think that is where things are headed. So I think it gives us a chance to explore what options there are available to us and what makes economic sense. So thank you.
Mike?
I'm good.
Pete?
I'm good.
I'm good as well. I want to thank the speakers. We, we are invested in trying to do better for the world. We really are. It's just not an easy thing, but we are trying. Anybody else? We're good? Public comment? Anybody else? Nope. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. Good night, everyone. Thank you.